Welcome to Tupelo City Council Meeting, October 15th, 2019. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilman Marco Whittington and the invocation will be led by Coach Travis Beard.
Please stand.
Pray with me. Lord, for your mercy and grace, we give you thanks. We ask a special blessing on this city, on this administration, and on this council. Be with us now and may our votes be pleasing to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please place the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I now call the meeting to order and I will call on Acting Vice President Buddy Palmer for confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the agenda and the agenda order.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Jennings, all in favor. Motion carries. Item four, Proclamations/Recognitions and Report Agenda. 4.1, recognition of Boy/Girl Scouts.
No, none tonight.
4.2, recognition of City Employees.
None tonight.
4.3, recognition of Captain Tim Bell, FBI National Academy.
Thank you, President Brian. At this time, if I could ask Chief Barti Gary and Captain Tim Bell and his wonderful bride to please come forward.
Well, glad you got to come. What I want to do is present Tim with this letter of special recognition for his accomplishment he achieved by attending and graduating from the FBI National Academy. Only 1% of the local law enforcement get to attend the National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. Our department currently has four that have graduated from the National Academy. So at this time, I want to present this letter of special recognition to Captain Timothy Bell. Congratulations.
We'll move to item 4.4, Presentation of Saving Achievement Award, Madalena DeWitt.
At this time, if I could ask the Representatives of Schneider, please come forward.
Thank you, guys, for having us this evening. I'm Ally Harris with Schneider Electric, which you know me from five years ago or so. And I have Madalena DeWitt with me and Dave Horton. And Dave Horton is part of our savings support team and Madalena also helps with that and our PR. But we're just excited to be here to celebrate with you guys today. About five years ago, four or five years ago, you guys bought a project for Schneider Electric, an energy conservation project where we renovated your sports lighting to the state-of-the-art technology across 27 fields, put in all-new lighting within all of your buildings, outside all the buildings, put in smart building automation technology to help you guys save money on your utility bills and reinvest that money to pay for infrastructure upgrades. And we are excited to celebrate today that we have reached a $500,000 milestone here. So since you bought the project, you guys have saved over half a million dollars. It is indeed working and doing what it was supposed to do, and we're very excited about that. And I do want Dave to say a couple words about the partnership and Madalena.
Yeah, so we are almost four years complete in the performance period of the project. I wanted to mention some employees of the city that have been particularly influential. Don Lewis, Alex Farne, who are both here, and Mark Timmons and Sammy Aderhold, the boots on the ground, who have really helped keeping everybody comfortable but at the same time ensuring that we're having a successful project. So they've been tremendous to work with and we look forward to continuing the partnership for years to come.
And again, we just wanted to congratulate you all on this huge accomplishment. We do look forward to future milestones. We will continue and Dave's team will continue to track and monitor these savings and be a partner in that. And we hope to be back in the next couple of years as you continue to hit these. And just thank you for being a great partner.
4.5A, Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Mayor Shelton.
Thank you, President Brian. If I could, at this time, I ask representatives from the Alzheimer's Association, please At this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, and the city of Tupelo, it's my pleasure to issue the following proclamation for Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Whereas throughout the month of November, the Alzheimer's Association shines a spotlight on the most common form of dementia that leads to memory, thinking, and behavioral problems. Whereas there are 54,000 Mississippians and 5.8 million Americans living with Alzheimer's disease, in every 65 seconds, a person somewhere in the United States will be diagnosed with Alzheimer's. Alzheimer's is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States and is the only top 10 cause of death in the United States that cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed. Whereas one in three seniors die with Alzheimer's disease or dementia, killing more individuals than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Whereas Mississippi has the ninth-highest Alzheimer's rate in the United States and had a 216% increase in Alzheimer's deaths since 2000. Whereas the Alzheimer's Association Walk to End Alzheimer's is the world's largest event to raise awareness and funds for Alzheimer's care, support, and research. And you can show your support and become an advocate to move. The Alzheimer's Association calls forward by signing up at ALZ.org/MS. Therefore, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, I do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in the city of Tupelo and encourage all of our citizens to do their part in assisting the Alzheimer's Association in the efforts to shine the spotlight on this mind-robbing disease by raising awareness and taking steps to learn the facts. Signed this day, 15th day of October, 2019. Thank you.
You're going to come back to 4.5.
We're moving to 4.5B now.
You skipped 4.5 recognitions.
Oh, for the council.
I didn't know if you wanted to do that first.
Oh, we'll move back to 4.5 Public Recognition on the council. Mr. Jennings?
Okay. Mr. President, I would just like to make an announcement. Let me get my phone back. I would sort of like to make an announcement. In Ward 7, we call the Ward 7 Committee. On October the 19th, at 6:00 PM at Thorndyke Park, we're having bingo night, fellowship night. And what this is about is trying to encourage people to come out and enjoy themselves and talk about things that we can improve our community. And bingo is kind of a hit for peoples to come out and enjoy. It's one of the ways we can get a lot of peoples out. And it's about talking about what we can do better to improve our neighborhoods. And so anyone that want to come out and join us, it won't be, we'll just give some fun prizes. We won't be giving money. We have a little food to share, fellowship. So if anyone want to come out and do a little bingo and win a 50 cents prize or something like that, come out and join us on the 19th. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to 4.5B, Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you, President Brian. At this time, could have the ladies with the DAR and junior DAR.
Children of the American Revolution.
Children of the American Revolution, please come forward.
One representative of the sons of the American Revolution.
And one son.
Trying to get them all.
Please come. At this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, and the city of Tupelo, it's my honor and privilege to issue the following proclamation for Native American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. Whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Therefore, as mayor of the city of Tupelo, I do hereby proclaim November as Native American Indian Heritage Month in the city of Tupelo and encourage and urge all of our citizens to observe this month with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed and set forth this day, the 15th day of October, 2019. Thank you so much.
Those are pretty glorious words, but to get down to it, this is the native historical, well, the historical homelands of the Chickasaw Nation. And in the early, mid 1830s, they were removed from here to Oklahoma. Well, now they're coming back to find their roots, and there are a lot of roots here. There's a lot of history under our feet. And the Chickasaws have a lot of projects underway here, several they don't talk about and some we are publicized. One is the Museum Interpretive Center out at the Natchez Trace Parkway. Hopefully, that'll get started soon. It's a time for us to celebrate our, the rich histories, diverse cultures, and important contributions of the nation's first peoples. And Tupelo is fortunate to have been a caretaker of the historic homelands of the Chickasaw Nation. Now, the Chickasaw Nation is endeavoring to preserve their tribal history and share their heritage with us. Thank you.
We'll move to 4.5C, National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Mayor Shelton.
Thank you, President Brian. I apologize, I didn't mention it pre-council. CVB Director Neil McCoy is presenting that now on my behalf at their meeting tonight. There was a little bit of a confusion, but he's doing that there, so we will not be doing that here tonight. But the presentation, the proclamation is being presented on behalf of the city tonight at their meeting.
Very good. We'll move to 4.4, Mayor's Report.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief, just a couple of items. Just a reminder, particularly for the folks at home, we're having the city of Tupelo's first-ever New Year's Eve party, our celebration this year, giving away, Toyota has graciously provided a blue suede Corolla to give away there at the event to kick off the celebration of the, and I can't say it, the 150th year, sesquenintennial, something to that effect, but the 150th birthday of the city. So New Year's Eve, we'll start those celebrations. Of course, the council's aware and department heads are aware, but this week, starting on the 17th, going through the 17th and 18th, Tupelo is hosting the Mississippi Municipal League Small Town Conference. So the city of Tupelo or department heads, of course, convention, visitors bureau, downtown Main Street, the conference center and arena, will all be rolling out the red carpet for approximately 300 or so elected officials from all over the state of Mississippi. So we're honored to be able to host that this year. It's the first time in a very long time the city's been able to host that, so we're glad to have them back. In addition to showcasing the city, it will have a positive economic impact. And I want to recognize one special guest. We've got several special guests here, but my junior high and high school principal is here, Mr. Dell Dobbs. His son, my friend Art, is the current principal of Tupelo High School, the only father and son to ever accomplish that. I'll be diplomatic for probably both of our sakes, can't help but mention that while he was my principal, they still allowed paddlings in school. Not going to say how many I got, but it was more than one, probably a week. But I just want to thank you, Mr. Dobbs, for the positive influence that you had on me and thousands of other students coming through Tupelo Public School District. With that, that will conclude my report at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll close the regular meeting and open up public agenda. Item five, public agenda. 5.1, public hearings. 5.1A, public hearings regarding lot mowing list. 5.2, citizens' hearing. We'll close the public agenda and open up the regular session. Item six, action agenda. No items. Item seven, routine agenda. 7.1, review approved/reject minutes of October 1, 2019, regular city council meeting.
Move that we approve. Second.
Second by Coach Beard. Second by Mr. Jennings. All in favor. Motion carries. 7.2, review approved/reject advertising and promotional list.
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Palmer. The expense list is Tupelo reads $130.68 reimbursement to the Education Task Force Fund and Northeast Mississippi Daily Journal, $638 ad for the Education Task Force Fund. All in favor. Motion carries. 7.3, review paid bills and approve utility adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Coach Beard. The bills were paid by Mr. Jennings, Palmer, Whittington, Brian, and Coach Beard. All of them.
And Brian.
I can't even sign them. Yeah, but anyway, not enough to go around. So all in favor. Motion carries. 7.4, review approved/reject final resolution for abhorrent tax expense for Leggett and Platt, number 0341 and 0908 and number 4201.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Coach Beard. This is a routine annual thing that we give tax exemptions for businesses here in Tupelo, inside the city limits of Tupelo, and that's what we're doing with Leggett and Platt. All in favor. Motion carries. 7.5, review itself/reject minutes of October 7, 2019, planning committee meeting.
A move that we accept these committee meetings. Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Whittington. All in favor. Motion carries. 7.6, review approved/reject request to surplus a Scott air compressor, asset number 11980/2127, zero number 31061438.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Palmer. They said we're surplusing an air compressor. All in favor. Motion carries. 7.7, review itself/reject minutes of October 8, 2019, Tupelo Traffic Committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Coach Beard to approve the traffic committee minutes. Any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. 7.8, review approved/reject order releasing sewer easement and accepting new sewer easement at 1776 McCullough.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Coach Beard. Mr. Timmons?
Years ago, there was a building built at 1776 McCullough Boulevard. In the process of building that site, there was a sewer line that ran parallel of this site. The developer relocated that sewer main years ago. We're just now cleaning that up and getting a new easement document for that sewer line that goes across there.
Any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. Excuse me. 7.9, review approved/reject ratified contract with Stewart about environmental construction for the synthetic turf installation.
Move that we accept.
Second.
Motion by Coach Beard, second by Mr. Palmer. This is, we have already approved this contract and they're doing the work at Ballard Park and then at Veterans on the softball fields. This is a cleanup, finishing up, and ratifying the final contract. All in favor. Motion carries. Review approved, we'll move to 7.10. Review approved/reject Mississippi Transportation Commission Airport Federal Matching Grant Agreement, project number AIP 32800700442019.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Palmer. Mr. Nice, you ready?
Thank you, President Brian and council. This is an MDOT grant. It's for the 2.5% matching share for the federal grant that we're using to purchase the new R index vehicle for the airport. It's $708,000 is the total, which 95% will be federal, 2.5% will be the state, and the airport will pay the other 2.5%.
Any questions? All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to 7.11. Review itself/reject appointment of Roy Turner to the Elvis Presley Birthplace Board of Directors.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this appointment of Roy Turner to the Elvis Presley Birthplace Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Whittington. Mayor Shelton.
Thanks, President Brian. Let me go back to 710 and apologize to the council for, I don't want to say lying, that would be a strong word, but misleading the council yesterday. I thought that was for runway improvement. So sorry about that. The 711, Mr. Roy Turner, I need to apologize as well to both Mr. Turner. Could you please stand, Mr. Turner? I think everyone knows Mr. Roy Turner. But I did apologize to the council yesterday. I thought I had mentioned this to the council several weeks ago, but I guess I forgot to get it on the actual agenda. But Mr. Turner is a longtime resident of the city of Tupelo, extremely involved in the community and the arts and music, and particularly with the Elvis Presley Fan Club, promoting the life legacy and music of Elvis Presley, Elvis Presley-related tourism events such as Dancing with the King and just you name it. He's involved, Film Festival, many, many events. But I think his, in addition to that, historian of the community, I think he would do an excellent job on the Birthplace Board there and would respectfully request the confirmation of his nomination at this time.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, I've known Roy Turner for a long, long time, and I think he would be a tremendous asset to that board, and I'm glad you're willing to take that responsibility. Thank you.
Did you say he sang? Is that what I heard?
I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you want to do a demonstration or a little bit.
This is an audition.
Okay. Welcome aboard.
Thought in discussion. All in favor. Motion carries. Welcome aboard. 7.12, review approved/reject abandonment of portion of Lumpkin between Stephen D. Lee Street and West Main Street.
Make a motion, we approve the abandonment.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Coach Beard. Mr. Logan?
As part of the rerouting or the relocation of Lumpkin Street to line up with Monument Drive, the, part of the project involved, the closing of Stephen D. Lee Street between Lumpkin and Roosevelt Avenue, the, and what we will do after tonight, I know that we had some questions last night, I guess this one. It's kind of repeated there. The, but anyway, the, and Mr. Cork, if he's still here, he may have to back me up because he knows he's forgotten more about land work than I'll ever learn. But when you close off the vacant street, the adjoining landowners have to waive compensation for that closure and their loss of access. In this case, the church is on both sides of Stephen D. Lee, and so they have requested that that be abandoned to them and they will waive compensation. That should take place within the next weekend as soon as we get the deeds and everything ready.
Ben, is that, does that street run in from Lumpkin to Douglas Street? Is that the street we're talking about?
From, from? It runs over to?
Run over to Douglas. Now, there's another street in there.
Roosevelt. It runs to Roosevelt Avenue that runs on the west side of, I think, the baseball field behind the...
Oh. I'm... Oh, I'm talking, I'm in the wrong spot.
Behind the Lincoln now, the old Harrisburg Methodist Church.
Oh, okay. So, the city owns that, is that, who owns that street? I mean, not, street, the city maintains it.
City maintains. It's public right of way now as a part of the...
So, when we vote on this, that street will be closed?
Yes.
So, who will have access to that?
The Wesley United Methodist Church has, owns both the parking lots that are there. They own both sides of the, of that street, so it will be...
So, we'll be relinquished from doing anything to that street in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
More discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. 7.13.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes?
I'd like to point out, 7.13 and 10.12 are the same. Am I right about that?
Um, so, no.
That's a different street?
Okay. This was 7.13.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, 7.13 is for Stephen D. Lee Street between Lumpkin and Roosevelt Avenue. 7.2 states a portion of Lumpkin between Stephen Lee Street and West Main Street. Can, I've got a motion and second for 7.1. 7.3, do you have a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Sir.
Second. Mr. Logan, can you sum this up now?
All right, even though they're reversed, they're, we'll figure it out.
Yes, yes.
In minutes, but we, the, the portion of Lumpkin Avenue that has been directed to the west and to the south is being abandoned. That will, Mr. Jennings, be relinquished to the adjoining property owners, and those property owners are the TMC LLC and the church. I believe that they have an agreement among themselves as to how that's going to be disposed of, and we will do all of this in a, one transaction where we relinquish it to these, these property owners.
On this drawing, is that, is that the part where that, where Lumpkin come around in that little circle, and that to the east of Lumpkin's, between the circle, I mean, the circle of that street and the church? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir. That will split one side of that, the west side of Lumpkin that runs into Main Street, the old, old part of it, to the west, and then the other half will go to the property owner to the, to the east, which is the west.
Now, the part that's on the side of the, same side that the church is on, that runs in that curve on the side of the church, the church will own that, right?
Yes.
Is it, that won't be anything built on that for, I mean, for, I mean, I know the church probably can, but my concern was, in the future, is that little curve, because it's a deep curve. We're not thinking about putting a building on that, or permitting a building in there.
The west side there, I think there, there is a separate agreement between the two property owners to utilize that property in a way other than that. The way we have to go through is to deed the property to the church, deed the property to TMC, and the use of that property will have to go by whatever zoning restrictions they have there on the ground.
My, my part was the part on the church side, between the church and the street. I know one part that goes down in that hill, down in that, where that basement of that building was, I'm not talking about that part, I'm talking about the part that's next to the church that comes out to Lumpkin's and that curve there. That would belong to the church, right?
Well, the, the only thing that we're giving up is the half, the east half of the old Lumpkin. And so that would be, there would still be...
Old thing, okay.
And the west half would go to the other property owner, which we took property from him further to the west to build, to move the road over there.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk to you about it later. I just, that was just concern of mine, that's all. It wouldn't have anything to do with passing this. Thank you.
Further discussion? I just want to clarify that we have two items that we're voting on, but it's all one project, and we've got a couple of different streets connected with a couple of the same streets, so we're on page with each item. It's just all one project, though. All in favor? Motion carries. Will move to 7.14. Review itself, ratify franchise agreement between Tail Pack Ceasefire and City of Tupelo.
Make a motion, we ratify the franchise agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Coach Beard. Mr. Logan?
It would be standard procedure that once we have authorized the mayor and the clerk to enter into this contract, that we will, that we bring it back before you to ratify the contract that has been signed by both parties.
Yeah, this is the cleanup. All in favor? Motion carries. 7.15 Review itself, ratify real estate development agreement with Pinnacle Point.
Make a motion, we accept?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Jennings. Also, this is, we're ratifying the contract. We've already approved it, and this is to finish out the contract. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. 7.16 Review approved, reject request application for tax abatement for Kindred at Home.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Coach Beard, second by Mr. Palmer. We're giving Kindred at Home a tax abatement. This is standard procedure inside the city limits of Tupelo.
How many, how many years is that?
Is it?
Is that, am I missing it?
Is it five? Five years?
Five years.
My...
So, as they develop that, each, I was trying to understand, he'll be able to ask for abatement on each thing he built out there in that area? Is that, Ben, is that correct?
The, the application process is that they come in and once they finish that building, you can get, you can take it from what property was built before the, before the approvals were made, and they, once they completed, that evaluation's done, they are abated ad valorem, real property taxes for the city, not for the city schools, for a period of five years under our current policy. You can go up to seven years.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. 7.17 Review approved, reject final lot moving list.
I move that we approve this list.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Beard. All in favor? Motion carries. 7.18 Review approved, reject resolution adjudicating cost and assessing liens against real property under Mississippi Code 211911, 1972, as amended.
So moved? Second.
Motion by Coach Beard, second by Mr. Whittington.
Ben, on this, one of these, I notice, I think I may be wrong, on, on Terry Road.
Hey, Mr. President.
Mr. Bryan?
On the case number 29500, I'd like to remove it from this list. I think this lady's either been put to a nursing home or may be deceased, and by putting this lien on this property, it could cause some problems with the house being sold and tying it up or whatever, and give time for the administration to, to go in and look at that. Now, I'm not saying give her a bye, I'm not giving the yard vote, but just the enforcement that are waiting right now.
Are you doing that in a form of...
Amending the motion.
Amending the motion? Do I have a second on the amendment?
What number is that?
That's 29500, Ray Sandra, 1407 Clayton Avenue. Just give them a couple of weeks to look at that, make sure they don't need any clarification. Once the lien goes on it, it's going to cause some issues on the property selling or being liquidated during the state, so.
Which, which one is that now?
The case number 29500. Next to the last one.
Okay. There's six.
Mr. Faulkner, you good with that?
So, they'll just bring that back and...
Yeah, just to make sure that, I think that she's been moved into a nursing home or some kind of hospice facility or something like that, and...
Yeah, we, we can certainly hold off on this until there's some resolution there.
The person that's living there is not getting off the hook. The only thing that the city's, what I'm asking you to do is don't process the paperwork to do the lien yet, until the administration can look and see. If they find out that that's not the case, then the lien can go through on the next meeting. But right now, it, it would be easier if the estate has to be liquidated or anything like that if it didn't have a lien on it.
Okay. The second was by Mr. Beard. All in favor?
To amend the motion.
Yes, all in favor? That carries. Now, we'll go back to the original, Mr. Jennings?
No, I was looking at one on Terry Road here. Is that, Ben, is that just the one? Is that just a lot on 922?
How much is the lien on?
Three, $300?
That would be a lot owing, and I'm not sure if there's a structure located there or if it was...
If that's the one I'm thinking about, that's been on the list for over 10 years. I'm hope, I'm glad to see that one. If that's just the one I've been thinking about on Terry Road. So, one like that, I know I done asked this question a million times. Where is, where is we at on collecting from this? Are we making any headway on collecting on any of these things?
I would, I would refer to Mr. Faulkner, we usually process one or two every week that are either sold or something of that nature, but as far as the total, we would...
Are we making any headway on collecting?
We, it, it's just a random event, Mr. Jennings. If, if somebody decides to buy one of those properties and come in and pay off, we don't really have a process of tracking that amount. We can start one if you think it's important.
So, if it's a structure on the building, at this point, somebody can come in and make an offer?
They can pay it off, but they can't make an offer for a partial payment.
Okay. I know we had an incident on a house that was supposed to have been torn down. I ain't going to get into where it was about, but it was such a bad deal, it was supposed to have been torn down, it was on the, on the debauchment list, but somehow, somebody bought it, and then they're renting it, and it ain't been much done to it. So, I don't, those type of things we need to follow up on, is when we get to that point, make sure that the person buys it, do what they say they're going to do to it, otherwise it's just defeating the purpose.
Yes, sir, it is, it is an issue, and we do have to pay real close attention, but if, if somebody comes in and gets legal title to the property, we, we have to honor that property right, and give them the opportunity to do what they say they're going to do. If there's no action on a permit after six months, then it becomes void, and we can take it up again.
All right, thanks.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Will move to 7.19. Review approved, reject resolution rescinding ad valorem tax exemption for Cooper Tire.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Mr. Beard. Mr. Logan?
We discussed this yesterday, in that earlier this year, in the, I think in June, we gave Cooper Tire a, what I call a, a regular ad valorem exemption for expansion of their personal property primarily, maybe some real property there that was on that, that list. Back in 2014, December 2014, we approved a, what's called a fee in lieu of agreement, which allows Cooper Tire to pay one-third tax, or one-third, a one-third payment to the county, to the city, and to the city schools. And they have reached the threshold on that of $100 million worth of investment over that period of time, and therefore, they would desire to take advantage of the fee in lieu of agreement instead of their regular tax exemption. So, we are rescinding the, the regular tax exemption for 2018 improvements that came on the rolls in 2019, and that will be taxed in 2020. Instead of that coming on the rolls as a, a ad valorem tax, they will be paying a fee in lieu of those ad valorem taxes instead. And it's something that we entered into with county and the, and Cooper Tire, and they have reached the threshold on that. Each year, they put in $20 million, $40 million, $30 million worth of new improvements, and this year, it's kind of, each year, those improvements in '14 would depreciate, and so it's taken them a few years to reach the $100 billion of not, of assets that they've added that are, that haven't depreciated. So, it's, they've asked that we go ahead with the fee in lieu agreement.
So, this would be, by doing this, this would be like five years too, or seven years?
It would be for the remaining portion of the fee in lieu of, which is a 10-year fee in lieu of, so that they would not, they would pay the fee in lieu of for the next five or six years. I'd have to count it up from when it went into effect, and after that, they would, it would all, all their property would go back on as ad valorem taxation as opposed to the fee.
Okay. Thanks.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Will move to 7.20. Review approved, reject Electric Department Financial Report, June 30, 2019, and 2018.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Palmer. We got a, a very good report on the, on the financial report. Mayor Shelton, would you like to share?
I'd be glad to. It was a report of no material findings, which is the, the best you can hope for as far as the audit. The, everything was good.
Yep, everything was good, like in the past. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to item eight, Study Agenda 8.1. Review approved, reject agreement with Pontotack County Board of Supervisors to share in cost of paving a portion of Mount Pleasant Road, line roughly one half in the city limits of Tupelo, Mississippi, and one half within Pontotack County, Mississippi.
Move it up?
Move it up.
Move it up? Have another move up?
Move up?
There you go. Appreciate it. We will now move into item nine, Executive Session.
Make a motion to determine an executive session.
I have a motion by Mr. Jennings, and second by Mr. Whittington, to determine the need for executive session.
The need is a, just a cleaning up in action on the previous, previous litigation on approving the entry of the final judgment of the case. That is a, a matter for executive session. We will take it just a second, we'll come back out and provide that to the vote.
Will there be a vote?
Yes.
Be a vote, okay. Who is included in this executive session?
I figure that just, just us gals up here, so.
Gals.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
All in favor of terms, determine the need?
Um, I wouldn't hear your statement, so we did make the announcement of what my new bird, right? Or did you, have we done that formally?
Was she here last?
No. This is your first.
This is your first? I'm sorry, I, I wasn't here last meeting, and I thought last meeting was first.
We hadn't, Will.
First, we have, we have a, for point of order, we have a new... First, we have we have a for point of order, we have a new city clerk, Missy Shelton. Council clerk, I'm sorry, council clerk. She takes care of us. She I've got bruises on the side of my leg that she kicked me tonight several times, but anyway, she keeps us in line. She's doing a good job, and I want to welcome her to our first executive session. Thank you, Mr. Jennings, for bringing it up. Now, I entertain a motion to go in executive session by Mr. Whittington, second. Coach Beard, all in favor? We are now in executive session. Thank you.